I'm Doreen Binder, President of the League of Women Voters of Portland, and we'd like to welcome you to our Voter Education Forum. Sorry, this is... The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to help citizens make informed choices in our elections. We do not endorse any candidate or political party, but rather, we give voters the information they need to select a candidate. Membership information is available on our website and in the table at the back of the room. We appreciate the support from Metro East Community Media, Paloma Clothing, the Multnomah Bar Foundation, the Wise Foundation, and the Carroll and Velma Sailing Foundation. Plus, we'd like to thank Multnomah County Government for the use of this room. If you have not yet registered to vote, the last day to do so will be October 16th. You can contact your county elections office, or you can register online with the Oregon Secretary of State. Ballots will be mailed out beginning on October 17th. Tonight, we will be having a panel discussion between the Portland City Commissioners Race, and we'll also be discussing two ballot measures: Measure 103 on groceries and a Portland Measure 2301 on clean energy. Thank you.
Okay, now to our forum for Portland Commissioner Position 3. This session will last approximately 40 minutes. I am your moderator, Linda Mather. Both candidates for Portland Commissioner Position 3 are with us this evening for an evening of civil discourse focusing on issues. They are Joanne Hardisty and Loretta Smith. The candidates will each have a minute and a half to answer to questions, but they'll also have a minute for an opening and closing. I will switch the responders for each round so the candidates can take turn answering first. Since we have two, it'll be a little bit hop and hop, but we'll be all right. The timekeepers are facing the candidates, and they'll signal a 15-second warning and then a stop when your time has expired. So, let us begin, and the one-minute opening starts us off with Ms. Hardisty.
Thank you so much. How about now? Thank you so much for coming out this evening. I want to start my opening by apologizing to Ms. Smith. We were at a forum last night, and I understand that Ms. Smith was re-traumatized by a dance performance that in no way was put together to cause her any harm. And I just want to apologize to her because women in this community deserve to be heard and respected. And so, my apology to you, Ms. Smith. I am Joanne Hardisty, and I am so pleased to be here tonight, and I thank each and every one of you for being here as well. I am running for Portland City Council because we're at a place where we need new, strong leadership who will be unafraid to challenge the status quo and demand accountability and outcomes for the services that we all say we want. I look forward to your questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the board. Is the mic on?
Push the button.
Hello?
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you for the chance to speak to everybody today. And I just want to give you a little bit of description about myself. When I look at the city of Portland, I see it as a granddaughter and a daughter, and I look at Portland through five generations of family here in Portland. My grandfather came here during World War II from Brooklyn, New York to work in the Kaiser shipyards in 1944. He stayed here after the war. My dad was one of eight children, and he brought my mom back here from the Midwest and married her. I was the first person in my family to go to college and to graduate at Oregon State University. As a single parent, I was able to raise my son in this community and to go to college and purchase a home. I've devoted my career to public service, starting with spending 21 years working for Senator Wyden and eight years as a Multnomah County Commissioner.
Okay, and Ms. Smith, we'll ask you to continue with the first question. Is the delivery of city services equitable? Please explain and describe which services. What, if anything, would you do to change the service delivery?
Service delivery is important for everyone. As you know, housing affordability and the ability to be able to pay for utilities is a huge issue for low-income residents and communities of color. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with bureaus like the Water Bureau, who have, in this last year, increased programs to help low-income residents. I think it is our responsibility as government to help out where we can. Many low-income residents here in Portland, they have been pushed out to the fringes of Portland, and housing is so ridiculously high that they're not able to pay their utility bills. So, anything that we can do to be helpful through our bureaus will be important for me.
Ms. Hardisty?
Thank you. Thank you. I do not believe that the city of Portland provides an equal level of service to people throughout the city of Portland. And I believe, and I know based on my conversations with community members at over 134 house parties, after knocking on over 10,000 doors, I can tell you that Portlanders feel like the further away from City Hall they are, the less their voice matters. And so, for me, it's about getting City Hall out of City Hall and making sure that the people who are being served have an opportunity to weigh in on the priorities that we have. And because we have such critical issues that are facing the city of Portland, we need a leader that works very well with the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners, with Metro, with TRIMET. We need to be building collaborations across the region because Portland will never solve our housing crisis alone. We won't solve our lack of mental health services alone. In fact, that is not even a service that the city provides directly. And so, we have to figure out how to work cooperatively in the region to make sure that we are providing services, adequate services, for all the people and all the neighborhoods in the city of Portland. A great example is Southwest Portland and East Portland share the commonality of being annexed at the same time, and both still lacking sidewalks, good lighting, good infrastructure. We have to fix that. If we join together, we'll be able to fix that.
And if you would keep your button on for... Do you support rent control? In what way would it increase the supply of affordable housing? What are the disadvantages of rent control? And we snuck three questions in there, but you got 90 seconds.
Yes, I do. Are three questions and 90 seconds. I can do this. I support a variety of options to help keep renters in their homes. What we know is that it's cheaper to keep people in their homes than it is to try to find them a new home. Rent control, yes, I'll be in Salem next legislative session lobbying to pass rent control. But we can't just stop at rent control because the reality is that the median income in the Portland metro area is $72,500, and most working people don't make $72,500. So, we can't just stop at rent control. We have to make sure that people are able to live in every neighborhood in the city of Portland and that their income does not determine their zip code. And we have to be creative. We have to think outside of the box. We've got to start thinking about multi-generational housing. We've got to think about shared housing. We've got to think about housing houseless families with empty nesters. There's a great pilot project that's been going on for the last couple of years. I'm looking forward to being able to expand that at the city of Portland. I think we have to not eliminate any option that helps people stay and maintain safe, affordable housing. And affordable housing is housing that people can afford to live in. It's not just a label that we tend to put on a lot of development projects. People have to be able to rent those units. At my neighborhood, we have 60-year-old women on the freeway overpass begging for money.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I've lived through housing insecurity with me and my son when he was young. We couch-surf. He is now 27 years old. And my son went to three different elementary schools growing up, and we struggled with housing. He was a trooper, but he was pretty tough, and I was too. Maintaining affordable rent is a big deal when it comes to working families and single parents. We need increased renter protections, such as limiting rent increases on subsidized affordable units that are not greater than the Consumer Price Index. Some landlords claim that they want to move back into their homes, and they displace renters. To ensure that this is not an excuse to raise the rent, the landlord should be required to rent the space for a year. This will provide some checks and balances. This is also used when you purchase a home from FHA. They have a policy like this, and I don't see why we can't use the same framework for owners who want to move back into their homes. The other piece about this, I have an idea. There are 970 brownfields, and I'd like to use those as mixed-use developments.
Thank you. Audience, again, if you'd like to ask any questions, the file cards are... There they are. So, just raise your hand, and somebody will be around to help you out. In the meantime, Ms. Smith, next question. How should the city respond to the recent Oregonian report documenting the disproportionate rate of arrests among the homeless population?
That was a horrible report that we saw, and it really criminalized homeless folks who are on our streets, and I think we need to do much better than we've done in past years. It has really pained me over the last eight years, particularly the last four years, that in Multnomah County, we funneled a record amount of resources into mental health services, homeless dollars, temporary housing, permanent housing, keeping people in their homes. But we're still at the point that we have 1,700 houseless people who are unsheltered on our city streets. I think that we need to do something that is bigger. We need to have an infrastructure that might be able to help many folks who may be on our streets, and I'd like to see us open up Wapato as that alternative and do a triage center where folks can get care for mental health, medical, dental, and an opportunity to get training and education that might take them further. I think we're missing an opportunity at this point.
Ms. Hardisty?
Thank you for that question. When 54% of the arrests are people who, but for being houseless, would never have faced the criminal justice system, when 84% of those arrests were for nonviolent crimes and for crimes associated with poverty, we are using our public safety resources in a way that they've never been intended. What we should be doing is hiring people who are houseless to take mobile laundry units around, mobile food, mobile garbage pickups. What we should be doing is helping people remove the barriers to full-term employment and opportunities in the community. What we should not do is call the police and expect the police to remove people from in front of residential and business structures because if they have nowhere to go, even the current U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that it is illegal, it is unconstitutional to require people who are houseless to move when we have nowhere to send them. And I also don't want us to invest millions of dollars annually into a temporary solution being led by businesspeople with no expertise in housing people who are houseless. I would much prefer to have housing experts be leading the charge for permanent, affordable housing for everyone in our community.
Thank you. Next question, and you'll start us, Ms. Hardisty. You are applying for a job that includes supervising the city's 911 system. National standards say 90% of peak-time 911 calls should be answered within 10 seconds. In Portland, only 14% are answered within 10 seconds. What would you do to improve the 911 system?
That's actually an excellent question. And in my conversation with the interim director of 911, Courtney, I'm not going to remember Courtney's... Rob? Bob? Bob? Bob Costi. What I remember about my conversation with him is that we now have a lot of calls going to 911 that really are not emergency-related calls. In fact, last year, there were 32,000 911 calls and 32,000 to the non-emergency number. And there is a pilot project taking place that actually removed 1,000 of those calls from last year's numbers and sent specifically medical responders to those calls. I think what we need to do is revise our 911 system so that we're sending the right first responder to the right incident. And so, I would love to embed mental health professionals in our 911 call center so that when someone calls with a mental health issue, they are talking to someone with a mental health background who will then send the appropriate responder. Today, sometimes, we send police, firefighter, and our ambulance, and 90% of those people stand around while one or two people take care of whatever the issue is.
Ms. Smith?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. You're applying, we're scenarios here, for a job that includes supervising the city's 9/11 system. National standards say 90% of peak 9/11 calls should be answered within 10 seconds. In Portland, only 14% are answered within 10 seconds. What would you do?
Correct. And the reason why only 14% are being answered within 10 seconds is because the majority of the 911 calls are made by cell phones. And I met with the 911 folks, and they said because there is a 10-second lag with cellphone use, that there is some technology that they need to purchase to make sure that there's not that 10-second lag. I agree with them because when you're talking about serving people with life-or-death kinds of services, we need to make sure that we're getting to the right people at the right time, and we know exactly what's happening. And they recognize that they don't have the appropriate technology to make sure that that 10-second lag is removed. But I'd work very hard to make sure that we put in the budget, money for technology. I've done it before at Multnomah County when we needed to get additional employees and additional technology. I've been able to identify those resources to make sure that they went to where they were needed the most, and I think this is so important that we should invest in that technology.
Okay. And Ms. Smith, start us with this one. What objective data will you need in order to make a decision on the residential infill project?
Well, I mean, that's already in play right now. The idea is to make sure that there's a lot of density in the city of Portland. And I had began to talk about my idea about brownfield sites. These are sites that are old. They're old gas stations, cleaners, mechanic shops that have oil or other particles that are in the land, and they need to be cleaned up. My thought is that since we have 970 brownfield sites, wouldn't it be great if we could get those sites cleaned up and put mixed-use developments on those? And we could put affordable, medium, and market-rate developments on these sites and meet some of the goals of the infill and density that we're talking about. I think it's going to take the political will, and we're going to have to put money into a zero-interest, low-interest loan so that it's revolving to make sure that property owners know that if you accept this, that you have to put a high-density, mixed-use development on that site.
Okay, and Ms. Hardisty?
I support the infill, the plan, the infill plan. What I don't support is a one-size-fits-all for every neighborhood. And I think we have an obligation to work with every neighborhood to acknowledge, with 45,000 people moving here every year, we've got to make room for the 45,000 people that are moving here. But that doesn't mean that every neighborhood should look exactly the same, and it doesn't mean that every neighborhood must lose its culture, its community feel. What it means is we need political leadership that's willing to work with community members and figure out, how do we creatively build, do the density that we need? How do we create more housing units? But how do we do it in a way that actually builds community and isn't pitting neighborhoods against each other? What I know from talking to developers is that in a time where we say we have a housing crisis, it now takes almost three times as long to get a piece of land divided if you wanted to do a fourplex than it did before the housing emergency was declared. Now, you have to do the dividing of the land in one step, which takes over a year, almost a year and a half, and then for the permits, it will take another year and a half. That's crazy, and I want to remove the craziness in making sure that we have affordable places so we can create one Portland.
Okay, and you're going to start on this one. Is there an administrative experience that you would highlight that illustrates your administrative abilities?
What a great question. I would say my ability to bring a civil rights organization back from the graveyard that was 101 years old. I had no money to pay people. I had no budget. I had nothing but goodwill when I became president of the NAACP Portland branch. I knew that if I had any blood left in my body, I had an obligation to make sure that the oldest civil rights organization west of the Mississippi survived. I am happy to say when I resigned earlier this year, it was an organization that had no debt. It had an office, which is the first time they've had an office in 50 years. It has excellent committees and excellent leadership, and I'm confident that they will do great things now that I'm gone. I have spent a lot of time, both as a supervisor when I was at Oregon Action. I supervised not just seven staff, but also hundreds of volunteers to work on some of the most critical issues in our community. I think my best skill set is my ability to be a convener, and I love convening people who don't agree with me because once we get together, we look for areas of commonality and we work in those areas. I have a lot of friends from my legislative days that I continue to meet with, and it's because I'm always looking for, where are the links? Where are the connections? And that's my desire, and I think those skills will serve me well on the Portland City Council.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Could you repeat the question, please?
I can if I can find what pile I put it in. Hold on a second. Yes. Is there an administrative experience that you would highlight that illustrates your administrative abilities?
One of the things that we have to do here at Multnomah County, I've been here for eight years, and I worked for Senator Wyden for 21 years, and I've been a public servant all of my adult life. But the key experience that I learned is how to allocate funding. That's very important for an administrator. When the community came to me and said, Commissioner, communities of color, they said, "Our kids are not graduating from high school at the same rate as everyone else. What can you do as a commissioner to help us help more students graduate from high school?" So, with my experience on the federal level, I knew that there were dollars that we needed to go after, and I identified a program called the Promised Neighborhood that President Obama started when he became a president. And so, I started going back and forth to DC because we had relationships with people on the federal level, and I started to talk to them about what was going on with Portland in terms of communities of color and the disparities in education and health and employment. And so, they did point out that the Promised Neighborhood would be something that we should apply for. So, I kept with that, and over the last four years, we applied three times for it. This past month, we were notified that we actually got the Promised Neighborhood, which would bring in $5 million for the next five years for communities of color. So, I'm happy about my ability to identify funding as an administrator.
Good. Okay. Audience, you're not holding up your end of the deal. We need more questions up here. So, please, we have at least two people back there who want to help you with that. Okay. And Ms. Smith, here we go.
Yes.
What is your position on the city's participation in the FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force?
Thank you for that question because I remember the last time that I answered that question, we were at the Crystal Ballroom. It was our first debate. And my answer, so that you know, it has changed a bit from that time that I last answered that question. Since that meeting, I've met with the ACLU, and I now share their concern about Portland Police only being given orders by the JTTF, which is controlled by the FBI. I initially supported being a member of this task force because I'm concerned about the safety of every resident in the city of Portland, but I've had meetings set up to learn more about this, including one with the FBI. I want to make sure that I have the most current information before making a decision, but I'm not definitive about this yet. It was the same way that I felt that it was important to offer a sanctuary county resolution because I felt that people in our community who are immigrants and refugees, that they felt left out, and they felt that, you know, we would turn their names in if they came into our libraries and our health departments to ICE. So, I wanted to make sure that they knew that that's not what the plan was here at Multnomah County, and I kind of similarly feel the same way about this JTTF task force.
Ms. Hardisty?
Thank you for that question. When then-Mayor Tom Potter refused to join the Joint Terrorism Task Force, he was very clear that he could not in good conscience put police officers that were under his control into a federal agency that he had no ability to supervise. And so, for a long time, we were not a member of the Joint Terrorism Task Force. As one of the last acts that then-Mayor Charlie Hales did, he slipped us into the Joint Terrorism Task Force, and I testified at that public meeting at Portland City Hall in opposition. In fact, every person that testified, every organization that testified, with the exception of the Department of Justice, testified in opposition to it. I'm very disappointed that we joined, and I have already talked to other commissioners, and I know that on the first day that I'm at Portland City Hall, I will be submitting a resolution to pull us out of the Joint Terrorism Task Force. We have no business cooperating with people that we have, with the federal government in an entity where we have no ability to supervise our own employees. That's not acceptable, and we should have never joined, and I can't wait to be the third vote to get us out of there.
Okay. Ms. Hardisty, talk about the poor air quality and high cancer risk in areas of Portland. Most people don't know about it.
Thank you for that question. I had the privilege of being invited by Governor Brown to serve on the Cleaner Air Task Force. You may remember that Governor Brown put that task force together after Bullseye was found to be spewing toxins into the air. I can tell you, when I moved here, January 1st, 1990, there was an organization called the EJAG, the Environmental Justice Action Group. I was on their board, and they were also fighting for air quality thing then. The difference was, back in that day, people of color communities were screaming as loud as they could that the air quality with the freeways were having a huge impact on them. Unfortunately, bodies, the public... found to be spewing toxins into the air. I can tell you, when I moved here, January 1st, 1990, there was an organization called the EJAG, the Environmental Justice Action Group. I was on their board, and they were also fighting for air quality thing then. The difference was, back in that day, people of color communities were screaming as loud as they could that the air quality with the freeways were having a huge impact on them. Unfortunately, bodies, the public bodies weren't listening. When Bullseye blew up, all of a sudden, public bodies were listening, and we had a task force. And I tell you, it's the meetings, they were windowless conference rooms, that the meetings were 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And most of the people that came, other than me, were lawyers representing the industry. And so what we came up with were recommendations that went to the legislative body, and those recommendations funded more DEQ employees, more employees to actually address air quality issues. Are we doing enough? I don't think so. But I think that we have to start somewhere, and we're going to be able to monitor air quality in a variety of areas that have high toxics. I live next to 84205, and that's a high-toxic area.
Ms. Smith? Air quality?
Yes. Could you ask the question again, please?
Yes, I got it. Talk about the poor air quality and high cancer risk in, oh, core areas of Portland, I think. Most people don't know about it.
Well, let's talk about the I-5 corridor. I-5, where you cross, Jansen Beach, is probably one of the most toxic areas in the city. Multnomah County in general, if you look at the reports, they're slated as one of the most toxic counties in the country. Because of the idling that's happening on I-5 and the extreme traffic that's on I-5, a lot of the toxins that are in the air, it goes into low-income, community-of-color neighborhoods. And so that's been happening for years and years and years. And now I live not in Portland proper, I live out in Wilkes neighborhood. If you look at the toxicity out in East Portland, it is equally as toxic. Between I-5, 205, and 82nd, there is a neighborhood called the Jade District, and that's where a number of residents of color live. And it's because of the highly-toxic, dirty diesel trimet buses. One of the things that I'd like to suggest is that those new electric buses that are going to be used as a trial in southwest Portland, that they put them in the most toxic areas, like the Jade District in the city of Portland.
And keep going on. What bureau of city government would best suit your strengths as a leader?
Well, I will accept any bureau that the mayor assigns me. But the bureau that I think that has been selected for Dan Saltzman will continue to be for the next city councilperson, which will be the Fire 911 Bureau of Emergency Management, Fire, and Police Pension Fund. And one of the, one of the first things that I think we need to do, and the thing that I think that I'm most concerned about, even as a county commissioner, I've talked about this, I'm most concerned about a major earthquake happening here. I served as the Regional Disaster Preparedness Representative on behalf of Multnomah County, and it provided me with an insight on how public-private entities are working to make us more resilient when the actual big one hits. But we have a lot of work to do, and it's estimated that 94% of neighbors will be saved by another neighbor. And that's why it's so important that we need more neighbors prepared. We need to make sure that our seniors and vulnerable people are fully prepared for disasters. And I will work with PBM and marketing experts to expand our outreach efforts for our fire department. I want to review their staffing levels. Firefighters do a lot of the jobs. They fight structured fires, there are medical professionals, and so much more. I want to review those staffing levels to make sure they're adequately staffed, while also looking to find efficiencies.
Ms. Hardisty?
I'm sorry, this time, could you give me? The question for me.
Sure. And this time, I know where it is. Which bureau of city government would best suit your strengths as a leader?
Well, I've asked Mayor Wheeler for the police bureau, but he said no. But it's okay, because I plan to work very closely with Chief Outlaw to ensure that we make changes to the police bureau so that all community members can feel safe when they encounter law enforcement throughout the city of Portland. I'm really excited about the fact that I will inherit all the rest of the public safety system, because quite frankly, we've invested way, way too many resources in policing with little results, and we've invested almost nothing in the rest of our emergency response system. We need more firefighters. We need to make sure that firefighters have the equipment that they need. They are facing severe cancer risks because of the toxicity of today's fires as compared to in the past. We need more 911 operators. We're just starting to get up to staffing levels in the 911 call center, but I'm really looking forward to figuring out how we make sure that every community knows who the right first responder is when there's an emergency, so that we're not spending a lot of time triaging phone calls, but we're actually getting the right first responder to the incident as soon as possible.
Okay. And, Ms. Hardisty? What specifically would you do to improve cooperation, collegiality, and collaboration among city council members?
Well, I can tell you that I have a wonderful work relationship with all members of the Portland City Council. In fact, two of the members have already endorsed me for this race, and that includes Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Yee Daly. I'm still working on one or two others, but I have testified in front of the city council many, many, many times. And we may not always agree on policy, but we've always been congenial. I've never been arrested at a city council meeting. I've never yelled at anybody. I am a legislator. I'm a former veteran, so I understand protocol, and I understand processes. But just because I ask direct questions doesn't mean I'm mad. It means I already know the answer. I just want to know if you know it. And many times, I find out that the people I'm asking the questions of don't. They don't actually know the answer, or they're not curious as to why we live in a city with a 6% black population, but 54% of the gang stops are of African-Americans. If you do the math, you know that, it just doesn't make sense. And it shouldn't make people think I'm angry, because I actually want an answer to that question. I mean, I think that's a logical question. I have worked with Mayor Wheeler. In fact, when he was running for Multnomah County, I was the first former elected to endorse him for Multnomah County chair. So I won't have any problem building relationships and rapport.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Could you repeat that again, please?
Again, know where it is. What specifically would you do to improve cooperation, collegiality, and collaboration among city council members?
Thank you. I think that's so important. I think I am going to be the same kind of commissioner that is accessible. I'm accessible to listening to new ideas, old ideas. I have a relationship with everyone on the city council. I think everyone has a voice, and we all bring a strength to the city council. As I said before, I bring my lived experience through five generations of family members here. And we have been fighting at Multnomah County to serve the most vulnerable. I have put a lot of resources into making sure that we build a system for our young people. One issue is to offer mental health services to students in our community. The other one that I've done that is really near and dear to my heart is that we have a, we had, we have a youth employment crisis. And I've worked with the mayor and every mayor that has been in office for the last eight years on this issue. And we've grown our summer jobs program to now a year-round program. We started with 25 kids, and I've grown that program to 650 kids. We now invest $2.1 million for low-income and underserved kids with jobs, not only with Multnomah County, we also put them out into the community as well.
Okay. Ladies, take a big breath, because we're ready for the closing. Okay. And Ms. Smith, you go first.
I went first when I opened, right?
Well, it's the way the questions fell out here. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Thank you so much for having this today, because this is very important, because we have to let you all know what we think about and what our thoughts are. But let me leave you with a couple of closing thoughts. My entire career has been devoted to public service. When you elect me, you get an advocate who knows this city through five generations of family. You get someone who spent her entire life serving the public. Everything I do is to promote the communities that I come from. This isn't about politics. This is about listening to you. This is about delivering for you, and this is about being your champion. This is about being Portland's champion. I have a long track record of investing in our community, especially to the lives of those who are most vulnerable. I have done it before, and I will do it again. When elected, I will start working on day one to make sure that we create more affordable housing, continue to address homelessness, and create jobs and opportunities for those who have been left out.
And Ms. Hardisty?
Thank you so much, and thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. I would like to earn your vote for Portland City Council, and I'd like to earn your vote because I hope what you've learned tonight, and what you learn when you do your own research about the candidates, is that I show up, whether I'm paid, whether I'm in a position of power, I show up and I do the work. And I've done that work consistently for almost 30 years in Portland. Though I wasn't born in Portland, I hit the ground running when I got here, and I have been an active voice for those without a voice in this community since the day I showed up. I didn't wait for a title. I didn't wait for permission. I was talking to someone a little earlier that reminded me that we were working on repealing Measure 11 back in the early '90s, long before anybody thought that was a cool thing to do. But we did it because it was the right thing. I will make sure that it's not my voice, but your voice that's considered in public policy decisions. Thank you.
And my thanks to the candidates. I think you can see the range of information and knowledge that they have and the commitment that they have to the city. Thanks also to Metro East Community Media for recording, the volunteers for helping, and all of you who did put in your questions. Please check our website, l w v p d x dot org, to view all our forums and for TV replay information. For more election information, pick up our Nonpartisan Voters Guide either at the local library in the back of this room, New Seasons Market, or Meals on Wheels Dining Center. Or for other information, go to 411.org. Election Day is November 6th. As in all Oregon elections, you will receive a mail-in ballot. If you don't, check with the County Board of Elections to make sure that your registration is accurate. Ballots must be mailed back early or delivered to an official drop-off site anywhere in Oregon no later than 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 6. A postmark does not count. Thank you for watching. Be informed, and remember that your vote is important. Help other people, family, friends, neighbors, vote, and remind them that it's important. We'll now have a short break before the next panel on Oregon Measure 103. Thank you.
Thank you.